This is the Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, meeting of the Esong Meadow Planning Board. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and those in attendance are myself, Russell Denver, Cassandra Cheraswellow, a member, although I think I just butchered that again, John Torsha, George Kingston, Pete Punderson, and from the Office of Planning and Community Development, Nina Fazio. So I'm required by Mass General Law to see if there's anyone who might be recording the meeting, and if so, would you please raise your Zoom hand, and you can be recognized and brought into the meeting, and let us know the method in which you are recording the meeting. Seeing none, first item would be the acceptance of the December 21st, 2021, meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Ms. Cheraswellow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. First item, Mr. Torsha?
Yes, case SPRW 2021-61, request for site plan review waiver for the construction of a 20-foot by 10-foot outdoor stage at 43 Chestnut Street, assessors parcel ID 40-7-0 on a plus or minus 2.8-acre lot in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Javier Herrera, 50, Indian Spring Road, Esong Meadow, MA.
So is Javier available to come into the meeting? Javier?
Someone coming in, there you go.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good, and you?
So tell us what you what you plan to do at that parcel.
So, as you guys know, I'm Javier Herrera de Nares, I'm a life scout in Troop 275, and basically what we're doing is we're building a stage, and it's going to be used for several purposes, such as educational band rehearsals, you know, people that can give lectures in there, and just, you know, it can be used for a lot of different things. And this is like, this is a requirement for my advancement and to get Eagle Scout.
All right, so questions for the petitioner?
I don't know whether the petitioner can answer this or not. Is the Masonic Lodge currently doing entertainment outdoors, or will this be a new venture for them?
This is going to be new, this is, this is nothing that they've been doing before, and yeah, it's not, it's nothing new.
Well, let me add a little bit. They do activities in the backyard, but the the stage will allow a better setting for the performance of a band or educational activity to the lodge itself. So it's a little bit of improvement of the area.
Does that make sense?
I guess, but my only concern, I mean, the stage is wonderful, but my only concern is the neighbors, if they're going to be increasing the amount of music, and that sort of thing there, they are in a residential neighborhood, and I, it's something that maybe...
The case.
...input from the Masons on.
I don't think it's going to alter the normal set of activities that they have, it's just an improvement of that area, and it's a small stage, it's 20 by 10. I don't, I don't, I can't imagine there's going to be a lot, a lot of noise other than whatever activities they already have.
So how many, how many people would you expect on a high end to attend any event back there?
Well, depending on what you're thinking, if it's, if it's like a band or a concert, then it could, it could range, you know, there's not a specific, specific answer. But, you know, if it's an educational purpose, like, there could be at least 10 or 20.
So, you know, I greatly respect what you're doing, and, you know, find your efforts admirable. I'm concerned about an overflow of parking there. I drove there yesterday and went through the parking lot and saw 37 applicable parking spots that would be available. Then, if there's any overflow, the only place that people then have to park is Chestnut Street. Chestnut Street is very heavily traveled way, you know, and then just to echo Mr. Kingston's, you're surrounded on two sides by neighbors. I'm a little perplexed here that, I'm worried that with the addition of this, that it would attract an overflow crowd, that the parking that's there now wouldn't be able to handle, and then we end up creating a traffic issue and public safety issue on Chestnut Street. So how can you address that?
Well, so I actually serve in the Masonic Lodge too, like with the breakfast every month, and I noticed that there, it does get overcrowded, like you said, which is a good point, but there is a way that there can be more, which more spark parking spots, which is able to go onto the grass itself, and, you know, that's where they can park.
But the events are small in size. They, as last I know, they sponsor a car show every summer, and I can't imagine, they do it almost every year. I think with the pandemic, it's been on hold for now, but I don't, I'm not aware of any major issue happening with the lodge allowing excessive amount of people, especially as Javier was saying, we're part of serving the community every, once every month, serving breakfast for people, and that never is an issue. There's always plenty of space for parking. People leave and people come, it's a very free-flow environment in terms of people and cars, and, and so it, I'm not aware of any issue with the community, and those, those years that the lodge has been trying to have a service for the community. So I'm unaware of any problem, but certainly the towns should, could do any, any rules in terms of, of people allow into, into the premises at every given moment. I think that that's a good point.
Yeah, I mean, you can see our point for public safety issues. You want to make sure that there's no parking along Chestnut Streets, or even people who might park at the church next door and then walk down Chestnut Street with the amount of the volume of traffic along there, you want to make sure we don't have public safety issues. So are there other board questions of the petitioner? So hearing that?
Oh, I don't really have a question, but I guess feeding off of George's concerns and yours, it would be interesting to hear from somebody actually from the lodge. I respect what you're doing, but somebody there who can address these questions maybe a little bit more clearly.
I would agree with that. I don't think Mr. Herrera can actually speak for the lodge, and I think it would be better if we were to continue this and get someone, an official from the lodge, to kind of answer our questions, because that person could then speak for the organization.
You want a letter written to the board, I would imagine?
Actually, I prefer if someone from the lodge could sit in on a meeting like this one, and to answer our questions, because, again, you can't really speak for the lodge, I don't expect you to. You're part of the project, it doesn't really deal with their activities, it deals with doing something physical for them, which is great, but I would like to hear from one of their officials, you know, the master or whoever can speak for them, to kind of answer these questions prior to giving an approval for.
We meet again, we meet again in two weeks, so that would be the 18th. We could put you on the agenda for the first item right at 6 o'clock. So if you could please make that arrangement to have someone from the, from the Masonic...
Absolutely.
Yeah. But I think, you know, overall, it's, you know, it's a very admirable project. We just want to make sure that the proper, you know, restrictions are in place.
Absolutely. No problem.
So do I have a motion to continue this matter to 6 o'clock on January 18th, 2022?
So move, George.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Ms. Cheraswellow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. We look forward to seeing you again on the 18th.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark.
All right, case SPRW 2021-62, request for a site plan review waiver for tire group tracking, a home office at 180 Kibbie Road, assessors parcel 51-13-4 in the Residence AA zoning district, applicant Robert Garren, 180 Kibbie Road, Esong Meadow, MA, 01028.
I don't see Mr. Garren.
Nina, did you talk to the petitioner?
Yes, I talked to him the other day to tell him it was on Zoom, and he got the link this morning in an email from me.
Oh, there he is. So we have a name that pops up, says Rob, and it says you are muted.
Your lower left, you have a mute button and a video button. Hover down there in the lower left-hand corner, Rob.
Hello? So you need to unmute yourself, lower left. There you go.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Welcome to our world.
Thank you.
So tell us what you have, have in mind on this location.
Okay, this is, uh, two April, uh, and my wife's processing paper. No, no storage, no anything, just an office and a desk.
Okay. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the waiver?
So move.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Ms. Cheraswellow?
Aye.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thanks for joining us, you're all set.
Thank you for the Zoom experience.
Anytime. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Torsha.
All right, so other business requests for consideration of final release of performance bond for Jeffrey Lane Extension Subdivision, applicant Southern New A Real Estate Development, Inc., 45 Noelwood Drive, Esong Meadow, MA.
So I think we all received a copy of an email from Tom Christensen at DPW advising us that he believed that we should retain 20% until the end of the winter season, I believe was the appropriate words he used. Everyone, everyone get a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes.
But he's also waiting for final plans.
Right. Yep. So we see a Larry and a Jeffrey. It looks like Larry is unmuted and Jeffrey is muted.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Is this Mr. Levine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, counselor, we can hear you.
Good.
Do you want, do you want to proceed?
No, I'd rather, and I spoke to Jeffrey earlier, I think he's going to be the lead.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Okay, let me see.
Either of you have a video, would be great.
Here we go.
There we go. Okay, now you're both there.
Yes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, basically requesting the release of the performance bond for the Jeffrey Lane Extension, as the construction is 100% complete, it has been inspected by DPW, and quite frankly, I'm very surprised that the email that was sent out at the late hour today, I didn't receive this until 10 minutes till four this afternoon. I've had several previous conversations with Tom Christensen on this. All the final requirements were submitted at the beginning of December, and I quite frankly don't agree with the comments, but the, the regulation clearly stipulates that there's, there's no reason to, to hold the bond any, any further. The regulation stipulates only that the base coat of asphalt has to sit over one winter, it does not require the final coat to sit over one winter. That's, that's not, not in the regulation anywhere, and so I disagree with that. And the final coat of asphalt has already been down for two months, so I think we've been through enough freeze-frost cycles to see that, you know, the road is holding up perfectly.
Questions for the petitioner?
I, I, I'm not an engineer, so I can't make any comment on the structural integrity of the asphalt going through one winter cycle. I mean, if that's, if that's what Tom Christensen suggests, then that's usually what I go with, but there's, there's not a final set of plans, and we don't approve anything without a final set of plans on record, so that, to me, would have to be fulfilled.
Okay, let me address this issue. It's been addressed several times. I addressed it with Tom Christensen several times. The initial set of plans for the definitive plans for the subdivision were presented and approved by this planning board, and according to regulations, if any modifications, I was to come back before the planning board. I came back before the planning board with the modification, which was a very minor modification, simply moving the infiltrator system from Lot 3 to Lot 2, of which there was a 24 by 36 plan modification presented and approved by the planning board and recorded with the registry of deeds. Mr. Christensen's the one who wanted a complete new set. There's no call for a complete new set, there's no need for a complete new set. I went back to the original engineer, who is now retired, after this request back in July of 2020 was done, I could not obtain a copy of the CAD file. I went back in November, when I knew this was being completed, and spoke with the engineer, and he said that he was planning on leaving, I don't know if he was going on vacation or what, but anyway, and he forwarded a zip file to me that was apparently done by someone else. So apparently he subcontracted out the original CAD file to some other person to do. The zip file that they sent, I cannot open because I don't have the software to open it. I forwarded that both to the engineer, who did the modification, and to Smith Associates, the surveyors on this project, both who opened it and said the file was not complete, it was just a bunch of line drawings, and there was nothing that could be done. I've subsequently contacted the original engineer, and I've had no response. There has been an as-built drawing submitted as required by the regulation, and Tom Christensen reviewed it, but only this afternoon did he get ahold of the surveyor, after the surveyor called him over a week ago about if he had any changes required, and there was a couple slight changes apparently from this email that I received at 10 minutes before this afternoon, and I had a phone call from my engineer, from my surveyor, saying he had done the, the changes, but by the time I got the message from my engineer at quarter of five this afternoon, he'd already gone. So I don't know what those changes are, but there are copies that I can bring to Town Hall tomorrow. So...
So what we would need is, from my view of my ears on the planning board, is when somebody goes to the drawer to pull up the as-built plans for the houses that are on Jeffrey Lane, will it show on that plan or reference that the structure has been moved from one property to the other, because in 20 years, no one's going to remember. I'm not even going to be around properly. So that, that's why, that's why an as-built with any of the changes needs to be there, so somebody can bring it out in years to come and know that it's not here, it's over here. That's my question, is there a set of plans that shows that, or can you have that done?
There is the original set of plans, which is nine pages. Of those nine pages, there's only a part of one page where it showed the infiltrator on Lot 3.
Right.
That lot, that was moved to Lot 2. There was a modified plan presented to the planning board, which you all approved last summer.
Right, I remember.
Showing that, and that piece of paper is on file, recorded, it's in the town office, and it's also recorded in the registry of deeds.
But that, that satisfies me, I mean, that's, it's there.
And you have an as-built plan that has been presented, and that is also in the town office in Tom Christensen's hands.
Okay.
And...
That satisfies my question, that's good, thank you. Thank you for the explanation, and I understand what you're going through.
Mr. Levine, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I've not seen the letter that was sent this afternoon to Jeff, nor to all of you, so I don't know what the modifications Mr. Christensen wanted. I had spoken to him about at least two, three weeks ago. The as-built plan was done by Smith Associates December 7th, and to the best of our knowledge, and I had spoken to the engineer, Dan O'Brien, probably a week to 10 days ago, he had not heard of any requested modifications from Tom Christensen. So I don't know what Tom could be asking or requesting. The only thing I can suggest, if there's concern on the planning board over this issue, is to find out what those modifications are, continue this hearing. I mean, the planning board could approve the release, and I didn't hear your beginning comments, is the, the request is for a full release of the surety bond. And did Tom's letter mention anything to that particular issue?
Yes. I think as you are aware, he recommended holding 20% allowed by the subdivision rules and regulations until the spring to ensure pavement conditions withstands freeze-thaw cycle.
Well, I would, I would beg to differ. Your rules and regulations of the Board of Public, Department of Public Works say a winter has to pass. We're in our second winter of that top coat, as I understand it. Is that right, Jeff?
No, the, the, the regulation stipulates only the base coat has to sit over one winter. It does not stipulate any timeframe for the final coat, and therefore, the base coat has sat over one winter and is halfway through a second winter, and the base coat, or the top coat, has already been down for two months or, or longer. And we've gone through several freeze-thaw cycles during that timeframe, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with the road. And the first line of his email that was sent out this afternoon says the DPW has found construction to be complete, and there's nothing about any waiting period in the regulation about the top coat. So therefore, I'm requesting a complete release of the bond.
Mr. Levine, I just want to go back for a moment. So are you, are you indicating to this board that the request that the DPW might want to withhold 20% is new to you, and you have not heard that before today?
I had heard that probably a month ago, and we responded that the, of both the rules and regulations of the planning board, as well as the state statute, and the regulations about the, the base coat, and the statute do not give that extension right to public works to say, we're going to wait another winter. This is significant, because the old, the rules and regulations specifically stipulate that. The statute doesn't require to release the bond other than abiding by the regulation, and this is creating a new regulation, and an applicant should be able to rely on that preliminary statement in the rules and regulation. So I...
My, my basic question was, are you indicating to this board that you had not heard previous to this evening that there may be a request from the board, from the previous to this evening that there may be a request from the board, from the Department of Public Works to retain 20% until the end of the winter season?
I, I had heard that and discussed that with them.
Okay, so, so it should not have been a surprise then to Mr. Bosworth, who said he had not heard of that until 4:50 this afternoon?
Well, we, we thought we had corrected that.
Well, then, then who, then who is speaking accurately, you or Mr. Bosworth?
Well, I, I had conversations directly with Tom Christiansen.
So Mr. Bosworth is misrepresenting the fact that the first time he had heard this is this evening at 4:50 when he saw the email.
I can't, I don't know the answer to that.
I, I want, I want an answer to that.
I, I will state that I was not aware that there would be a further holding of the bond until I received this email at almost four o'clock this afternoon. I had conversations with Tom Christiansen about releasing or not re, that I wanted to, that I was planning on going to the planning board to get the bond released and asked him to inspect the road. And this is the first I'm hearing that he wanted to hold 20% of the, of the bond. I mean, the bond was released from the original 100,000 previously down to, the last revision was down to 32,000, which was supposed to be the 20%. And now he wants to hold an additional 20% of the 30,000? I, I, I don't see in the regulation where it states that you can do this.
Questions from the board?
I, I agree with them.
Okay, Mr. Kingston, do you want to add something?
I should make a comment here. Having been through many subdivisions in my time on the board, I have to rely on DPW's recommendations. I would be reluctant to release the full bond if DPW thinks there's a need to retain a portion of it. I, I've seen too many things go wrong with subdivisions in the last 13 years I've been on this board to go against the judgment of our DPW, which is generally quite good.
I'm going to throw out a comment here. I don't think anybody's going to like it. This town does not have a registered licensed professional engineer on staff who was qualified to make that judgment. And your regulation states that all these documentations are supposed to be presented to the town engineer. The town does not have an engineer.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you, Mr. Bosworth.
I'm, I'm basically, my comments on the base coat, if the regulation or the 20% is based upon the base coat and not the top coat, the base coat's going through a year, it's gone through a year and a half of winter. And does Tom Christiansen have the authority to now apply it to the top coat? And I think that's what's the discrepancy here is, and I'm not sure he does, but I happen to agree with, with Jeffrey.
Okay. John or Cassie, did you want to add anything?
I think this has been a good conversation. To be honest, I'm pretty split over the issue right now. And I think this has been some good information. You know, I don't, I don't want to be an inhibitor to the process, but I would like to perhaps hear more of what, more of what Tom Christiansen may have to say, but I, I, I quite frankly am, am split.
I would agree with John. I'm also split on the decision. I can see the petitioner side, but I would agree that Tom is the person that we defer to in these instances, what he requests.
Yes, Mr. Levine.
I would direct the board to look at your zoning bylaws, page 54, section 7.2.2 subsection 1, second paragraph. And that talks about the binder. How long the binder has to set? Make up new rules. Unfair to the.
So we have, as a board, since I've been on it for at least four and a half years, we have routinely withheld 20% until the DPW has felt that the project has met, has met all their guidelines. In the four and a half years, there has not been one instance where we've acted on a bond release, where we haven't gotten direction from DPW and if necessary, held the 20%. So in your opinion, the planning board has been doing it incorrectly for the last four and a half years or maybe even longer.
I, I don't know the answer to that. And all I can tell you for this particular transaction, one, we're, we're shooting in the, in the dark because we don't know everything that Tom Christiansen is lying of. And why he came up with just that continuation of 20% when it's here in black and white, that's not, that's not the proper procedure. The as-built plans just to say two hours before a public hearing that in fact their modifications need to be done to as-built plan. Again, that's unfair. So rather than continue being argumentative, we have to clear this up with Tom Christiansen. And so the board, planning board feels comfortable with this. And so I would ask Mr. Bosworth, and I'll do it in public, that my, my suggestion is that we discuss this with Mr. Christiansen, why he's taken this position, what modifications are done? And continue this hearing until your meeting on the 18th.
I would support that, Mr. Chairman, because I feel we're hearing one half of the conversation here. And, you know, timing may be poor and everything else, but we're really hearing one half of the conversation here. And we need to get the full story.
Well, Mr. Bosworth is the petitioner, so if he requests us to do that, we can have a motion to do so.
I will go along with continuing this till the 18th, but till you have that discussion, but I'm also pretty adamant about sticking to your regulation, which you should abide by.
Okay, so the request has been made to continue the hearing or continue this matter until the 18th of January. Do I have a motion to do so?
And we'll have Tom Christiansen here, correct?
Nina, can you make those arrangements, please?
Yes, I can ask him to come to the next meeting.
Mr. Punderson, I, I think you know someone who could make sure that happens.
What, that Tom shows up?
Well, he comes to the meeting.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll do my due diligence. And I, I approve if, as long as Tom's going to be there. There's no sense in not having him here.
Yeah, yeah. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Mr. Saraswello?
Hi.
Mr. Torsha?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
The last item of the evening is the director's report.
So Nina, can you tell us the status on behalf of the town of maybe getting, you know, additional professional assistance into the office? If you know of anything?
I have not heard any updates since Bethany has left.
So I see Marilyn Richards in the audience. I don't know if she might be able to jump in and might know more. Marilyn? And my apologies, I, I did have a checklist for tonight's meeting and one of them was to reach out to, I believe, Mary, Mary McNally still with the town. And I was going to reach out to see what the status was and I unfortunately got busy with work. Hi, you're muted.
Okay, I wasn't prepared to come in. I was just watching.
I saw you and I figured you might know more than us. So if you know of anything.
Actually, I do know that there have been some interviews taking place with. You know, replacing Bethany, but beyond that, I've been on vacation with everyone else.
Okay, so that's good. Yeah.
But people are, people are interested. So hopefully Mary will take care of that. Mary's still with us.
Great.
And that's great, too.
Thank you for filling us in.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it.
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. So we are meeting on the 18th. I believe that the Verizon petition will be back in front of us on the 18th. Nina, do we have other, do we have any hearings scheduled or site plans that you're aware of?
Um, currently nothing so far. The only thing is that there are two more of those e-codes for the bylaw amendments to go through. I was talking to Jeannie. She would like to get them over as soon as possible, but whenever you guys would like to schedule them, just let me know.
Bring them on.
All right. I think the earliest would be the first in February to allow for a legal advertisement. So I'll put them then.
I, I know Ralph's anxious to get it done.
Good. Any other business? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.